My sister told Crane he liked that, too. Okay.
Left or right?
This is Fulton.
Yeah, I know. I have seven clocks.
Are you slumming or are you ...?
Don't be trouble with your ghost at here.
Oh, stop now. He wouldn't do that. We have to talk later. Please, Christ, let's just ...
The United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, and with this law ...
As soon as our children were returning to school, bless and guide them. Let them have a good, healthy, and safe environment. Give them the knowledge, understanding, and encouragement so they do well. Help them to lay a good foundation for their future. Amen.
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Sahaski?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Here.
Alderman Woodward? City Attorney David Hawthorne?
Here.
All present except for Sixth Ward, Your Honor.
Thank you. First item?
Resolve that the minutes of the council meeting held on August 1st, 2000, are hereby approved as per attached.
I'm over.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that the city be authorized to prepare a grant under the New York State Grants Program for the development of Van Buren Park in Fulton, New York.
Mr. Krupp?
We've talked about this in the past a little bit. The Environmental Committee has been working on what exactly to do with Van Buren Park to bring it back to a usable park that the kids could enjoy. We came up with a design through BB&L and Tony Kotz Architecture of the proposed Van Buren Park. What we're proposing is, first of all, along the Waterhouse Creek is to reinforce the slope going down to the creek from the park. And then designing Van Buren Park as such. These are the recommendations from Tony Kotz. You see, in the recommendations, there's a softball field, a multipurpose field, basketball, volleyball, horseshoes, playground for the kids, a bike course, and a skateboard park.
Can you turn, can you pick that up with the camera so ...?
We've gotten some estimates to accomplish this, about a million and a half dollars. We want to write a grant to get some funds to do this. Looking at doing a lot of this with in-kind labor, DPW workers, water department, to make it so that a lot of, the city doesn't have to come up with a lot of money to do this. We can do a lot of it with in-kind, in-kind workers.
And this resolution is just to authorize you to apply for the grant?
If the council wants to apply for this grant, it's good to have, well, part of the prerequisites is to have approval of the council to do this. They ask for that in every grant that I would have to write. And they're due on August 31st, so we have pretty much all the background material that we've gotten from the Environmental Committee and it's a matter of putting it together.
Does anyone on the council have any questions?
No, but I'd like to say something, Mayor, if I may?
Please.
A lot of people did, put in a lot of time and effort and worked hard on this. I'd like to give credit to a number of people here. Alderman Bob Weston, Alderman Rod Woodward, myself, John Crook, the mayor, Archie Fearewini, Sandy Weston, and, did I leave anybody out? I know we had a number of people that would come and ...
Barry Ostrander?
... visit with us.
Barry Ostrander and Commissioner Graham from Mr. Parsons and Barry Ostrander, Recreation.
And also our city attorney, I want to give him credit there.
Thanks. No, it's hanging around.
Oh, it's hanging around. I think this is going to be a super thing. We've got to get it off the floor. If we get this grant money, get this thing started. I know Bob's in charge of, he's the chairman of Recreation there, and there's all kind of plans for Rec. to be done down there. Okay?
Thank you.
I would just also echo what Alderman Sahaski has said. The Environmental Committee has been meeting for, for all of this year and all of last year, and established a list of priorities, and certainly one of the priorities that came to the top of the list was Van Buren Park. We saw Van Buren Park as, one, is the biggest parcel of land undeveloped in the city. There was a need for it to develop it environmentally, and also from a recreation standpoint, the three aldermen that are on the committee, as I just mentioned, myself, Alderman Sahaski and Alderman Sherman, and all of us have expressed an interest in increasing our recreational facilities, and this is certainly one that will give us a place on the east side as opposed to, we have a lot of recreational facilities on the west side. Also, that, a couple of things that Alderman Sahaski and Alderman Sherman had always focused on was, we needed someplace besides softball fields, soccer fields. So this was, this is an attempt to address some of the activities that kind of fall into the cracks, and that's the bicycling and the skateboarding and the rollerblading and some of those, and those are going to be addressed at this park. So I'm certainly 100% supportive of this. We're going to apply for the grant and hopefully that the state will see that this is going to be a worthwhile project, and I support it 100%.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Next item is a bond resolution dated August 15, 2000, authorizing issuance of $100,000 serial bonds for the city of Fulton, Swiggo County, for the installation of water meters throughout the city.
Sure. Never mind.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas by notice and order dated July 27th and duly sent to the property owner 66 South First Street, said property owner was notified in accordance with the city code that the building thereon is a dangerous building as per section 53-2, and had to be repaired or demolished within 15 days. Whereas said property owner has failed to comply with the order and more than 15 days have passed, now therefore be it resolved in accordance with the city code, section 53-5B, the Code Enforcement Bureau's chief is authorized to cause said building to be demolished. Be it further resolved that the cost of such demolition should be charged against the land upon which such building exists in the same manner as special assessments and for real property taxes provided for in the city charter. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise, receive, seal bids in his office, on or before August 31st up to 2:00 p.m., and to be publicly opened at 2:15 p.m. The council chambers for demolition of the building located at 66 South First Street in accordance with specifications prepared by the Fulton Engineering Department.
You have any input on this?
Never heard of it. There isn't really much more to add than what the resolution states. As everybody's aware, there's pending litigation involving this building, but we felt, myself and codes chief, that we still have an obligation to make sure that, from a safety standpoint, to follow the city code and proceed to have this building demolished if we felt that if we felt that it fit the definition under the city code of a dangerous building, which we feel it does based on our engineer's report. So this allows us, or this continues this process. It doesn't mean it's going to happen tomorrow because, as stated in this resolution, we need to advertise for bids, and we still have the litigation going on and some possible resolution of that. But we don't want to sit and wait for that to fall apart and then come back and say, now we need to take the building down. So that's why we're asking for this.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that the city chairman will be authorized to make the contingent transfers as follows: $18,000 for security camera downtown gazebo area, $2,000 for design work for development of vacant lot at 66 West First Street South, and $2,000 for computer training.
Where's 66 West First Street? Is that the house that got took down?
Yes.
Yeah, the old church?
Next to the, where the church?
That we took down? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it. Second?
Any questions on this?
I just think, I just want to make a comment on the security camera. We have a beautiful area downtown. We have a beautiful gazebo and arena, and I think this is something we definitely need to protect our downtown area. And it's, from what we've heard from the company, that this is certainly a very effective way of monitoring what's happening downtown.
Well, we have definitely experienced too much vandalism downtown since we have reopened the street and did a lot of work down there, invested a lot of money, and hopefully this will help secure our investment.
I'd also like to add that we're starting to see some unauthorized use of play vehicle charges here in city court involving the downtown area, and when the law was passed, the fine amount is only $25, and I think that with all the vandalism we've seen down here, I think we might want to consider raising that fine amount.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
A resolution authorized the issuance of $375,000 to pay the cost of various capital projects in the city of Fulton.
This is the bond resolution that we originally passed two meetings ago, I think, or three meetings ago. It has to do with new heating system in the West Side Fire Station, roof on the War Memorial, purchase of a snowplow, but just the basic chassis, we're going to change over the other equipment that we have on hand, a pickup truck for the Recreation Department, a pickup truck for the Traffic Department, reconstruction of the boom truck for the Traffic Department, purchase and installation of an exhaust system for the East Side Fire Station for the vehicles. Right now, every time they start up the vehicles in the building, the air conditioning system picks up the exhaust, pipes it through the building. This is going to be required by OSHA. Reconstruction of one of the Packer bodies for the DPW. The purchase and installation of a traffic signal at Seventh and Unida, which is required because right now the present signal is attached to Niagara Mohawk poles. They have notified us that we need to remove that from their poles. And the purchase of a truck for the wastewater treatment plant for, to replace a vehicle they're now using to go around to take samples for the industrial pretreatment program. That's what the total of all those expenditures come up to, the $375,000 in the serial bonds. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it. Second?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Next item.
Excuse me, Mayor Stafford?
Yes.
May I interrupt your agenda for just a moment?
Yes.
We came here tonight about the number two on the agenda, and I wasn't sure if we could ask any questions regarding that. We wanted, if you could just back up a minute on the grant development on Van Buren Park. I don't see a, I don't see a list where there's a public, you know, question or answer, but I just wanted to say something if I could.
Yep.
I have a parent with another parent, and ...
Do I have to? Sure.
I don't want to come down here. My name is Felicity Abenford, and I'm here with my son and a neighbor and her son, and our children skateboard. And I guess I'm, you know, fully supportive of John Crook's ideas and what he's working on. My question to the chamber, to this group of people is, do you have any ideas or plans? And maybe you could, how many, how long before this would be available? It's a couple of years, right?
We are ordered a grant. We'll probably be notified the end of this year, early next year, and then by the time it was all constructed, probably take next summer to do it.
Two, three-year plan?
Probably realistically 2002.
Well, my question to you folks is, my son's going to be a freshman in high school, and what we're finding as citizens of the city is that there is not a place right now for kids to rollerblade and skateboard, that they're not confronted with a problem, whether it be, you know, there's signs posted all over that they're not supposed to be downtown. If they go to a school parking lot, the school officials obviously don't want them there due to liability issues. If they're on the streets, you've got people complaining, you know, because they shouldn't be in the road because people are driving. So I guess I'm asking for your assistance, and I know Bob and I have talked briefly, and Mrs. Ronback has talked with Bob, and I think you've been involved in this. What we're looking for, and I'm sure this isn't the right forum to be getting into it, but I promised my son that I would try to find this out, is what can we do in the meantime to help these kids find a place?
We are ...
I mean, my son, it'll be three years, he'll be almost out of high school by the time.
We are working to provide a temporary location in the parking lot north of the United Street Bridge.
So hopefully that would be our plan, is to keep moving in that direction?
Yes. Yeah, we intend to do that as an alternate ...
Oh, great.
... alternative, to have something now or in the near future to allow them to have a place while ...
That's law, they're in a law-abiding place, then?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Any idea on a timeframe for that?
Could happen, could happen this fall, but probably next spring.
And is there any help that you need from parents or kids to help this happen any sooner, or is there anything that we can do from ...?
We had what I thought was a very productive meeting with, you know, your son and Craig Ronback and Louise, and with the mayor and, what, city attorney. So we had quite an extensive meeting, and that was the, the whole idea of the meeting was to establish an alternative ...
In the meantime.
In the meantime. So I think we all came away with different things that we needed to do, and there was a great deal of enthusiasm on the boys' part. They presented a petition with 200 names on it. The mayor certainly is strongly behind it. He immediately said, we need to find a place where you can do some rollerblading and skateboarding and bicycling.
I just, I feel bad for them because it seems like everywhere they go, they can't be there, you know, and I want to find them a place to go where it's safe and it's, they're being law-abiding. I want them to be following the law.
I think we're three-quarters of the way there because we've already got some preliminary things done there. We just needed to find out a few other things that had to be done. We've got the fencing down there, we needed to get some more fencing. The boys are very enthusiastic, as I said, and have said that they would assume a lot of the responsibility.
Right.
Build a lot of the apparatus that they need, or at least acquire.
Right. And we've checked with the Swiggo because the Swiggo city seems to be running a program that's very successful there without a lot of problems that I could see when I've been up there, and ...
Yeah, we had, we had the waiver that they had up there, we had the rules that they had. We presented that to the city attorney for him to look at. He seemed to be pleased with what he saw.
Well, that's, I'm pleased, then. I just, I want you to let me, you know, let you know that I'm encouraged by this, then, and that, I really apologize for interrupting your agenda. I just was really unclear if we could, you know, assist you, if you need a group of parents or kids to assist you in anything. I hope that you'll call on us because, yeah.
You can be assured of it.
I really, I really want to see this happen before he's out of high school, and it's great, and he'll be able to come back and visit, and maybe he'll still be using it 18 or 19 years old, I don't know, but right now, when he's only 14, is when I really want him to have somewhere to go. So thank you, and again, I apologize for interrupting.
No problem. No problem. Thanks, Liz.
Okay. Next item.
Whereas the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of August 15th for proposed local law which offers a retirement incentive to eligible city employees, Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak on this issue? Is there anyone on the council that would care to speak to the issue?
Do you know how many people qualify?
We have, I don't know the exact number, we have some people that do qualify for What has to be kept in mind is, if we authorize this, we have to show a 50% savings over a two-year period. That is one of the requirements of the program. Does anyone else have any questions? Entertaining a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Present the written oral comments regarding said proposed local law. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law which offers a retard, retirement incentive to all eligible employees, city employees hereby approved.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that, too. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. I'm not, no, I'm not sure that we can fulfill our obligation. How do you mean? We have to show a savings of 50%. That's standard every year that this is offered. It's like if you have somebody that retires making $55,000, and you replace somebody making 27, 28, 30, say 30 for a round number, that's saving 25, and that's close to 50%. When you factor in benefits, I'm sure it'll be close. That's a requirement every year when we pass that, isn't it?
It has been, and I ...
It's no different than last year, the year before.
It's some, it's some bit of a question. This came up before both the school district in a Swiggo and the school district here in Fulton, and both of them declined to implement it this year due to that clause in there.
Because they didn't feel they could save 50, or they didn't want to save 50?
Because they didn't feel they could save 50.
Well, if it's a requirement, then, if it's a requirement, then I guess you have to set a lower starting pay. I mean, that's pretty simple.
Starting pay is usually set by contract.
Hence our executive session at the end, at the end of this meeting.
Yes. But what we're, what we're saying is, if we allow people to retire and they get the incentive to retire early, and that's what this does, there could be a point where we cannot replace them. I do not feel, we're at a point right now where we can adequately ...
Geez, I didn't even think of that.
Staff our ...
You have three people retired and hire two. That's even better. And that's what I was basing it on, that, I don't know whether we could do that or not. And also, the, both school districts have voted against it, so. I think with the school district, you're looking at a lot more people, though, aren't you? Probably. That's why the question I ask is, how many people do we have eligible? Historically, it's like three or four years. Yeah, three last year.
Okay. Next item.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this council meeting of August 15th relative to a right-of-way proposal submitted by Mr. Mike Seiber for his property located 702 Emery Street, Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Do you know if they were at the planning commission last night?
Oh, they didn't have a meeting last night.
But they weren't there. They didn't have a quorum for the planning commission.
Right.
Seiber's wasn't there.
They were not there?
They were not there.
Okay.
But without a recommendation from the planning, we can't, we can't have a hearing the way the law is written, right?
That's right.
We cannot have the hearing because we did not get the recommendation from the planning commission.
Right.
Alderman Thompson, do you want to check with them?
Give them a call tomorrow.
And see if they still want to do this, and if so, we'll make arrangements for another public hearing?
I think we've advertised for it twice.
This is twice?
And not been able to do anything.
I would recommend you don't advertise.
I'm going to say that we don't advertise until we've got a recommendation.
Right.
It's taken this long, they can wait a couple more weeks, so.
Okay. Due to no recommendation from the planning commission in regards to the right-of-way proposal, we will cancel this public hearing until we get the recommendation. Next item.
Whereas by contract dated October 16, 1998, the graphics warehouse, James Lynch Owner, agreed to provide for the city an electronic message board and change for a certain sum. Whereas although said message board was delivered by Mr. Lynch, it has never, it has not ever been, nor it is now, in complete working order. Whereas the city attorney has previously been in contact with Mr. Lynch and now in contact with his attorney in attempt to resolve this matter short of litigation. And whereas said contacts have proven fruitless, now therefore be it resolved that the city attorney is hereby authorized to commence suit against Mr. Lynch in order to recover the city's monies and/or to get the message board fixed and/or to enforce the liquidated damages clause of the contract. Be it further resolved that the city attorney and mayor are hereby authorized to execute any documents necessary to carry out the provisions of this resolution.
This is something you want to move? Yeah, thanks. This is one I'd rather not comment on. The intent, of course, of the electronic message board was to provide communication for people that traveled past the community center and the War Memorial, alerting them of the events that were upcoming in the city. The concept was great. Unfortunately, the mechanics were not what we, were not favorable. So I think that we have no choice but to take this action, and hopefully this will be corrected, and we'll have a message board that's working to our satisfaction. Is that a motion?
Hearing that, I take that as a motion?
Yeah, I move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
May I add something?
Yes.
Having done that and having heard what Mr. Weston said, I should still report that actually today, I finally got a call from Mr. Lynch's attorney, and he claims that Mr. Lynch is still, seriously desires making everything right with us. And I said, I was, I said that this was on the agenda tonight, I would still like to have the resolution passed, and I would certainly give him a little chance, but what he really wanted to know was who Mr. Lynch could ...
wanted to know was who Mr. Lynch could use as a contact person within the city to facilitate coming and making us happy. And I know that Scott's been the one in the past, I don't know if, maybe Bob would want to get back involved in that regard, the only problem is, I know that the-
I'd be glad to let Scott take over.
Okay. So what I will do is tell the attorney to contact Mr. Pelosi, and if he can, if he can make it right, fine, but he claims that, I don't know, he definitely wants to make us happy, he said, and he's told us that all along, but it's been quite a while, so at least, we'll give him another shot, but not too much longer.
I've talked to Scott on this before, and he certainly talks the language better than I do, so I, the last time I talked to him, I hadn't called a sign company in Syracuse just to, for some more additional information, so I think Scott is an excellent choice.
Next item.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for seal bids in his office, honored before August 31st up to 2:00 p.m., and to be publicly opened at 2:15 p.m. in the council chambers for Kroll water meters in accordance with specifications prepared by the Fulton Engineering Department.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of August 15th, to consider proposed local law, which would adopt Article III entitled Minimum Annual Charge to Chapter 173 of the Fulton City Code entitled Water. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Mr. Cawthorn?
Mr. Parsons happened to be here.
Oh, is this your court?
I can explain this legal terms, I know that this came from the water department at their request. Basically, what this proposed law would do is, any user of water that fits the definition of 100 million gallons per year, possible usage-
100 million gallons?
100 million gallons per year possible usage, possible usage would have to pay a minimum annual charge equal to 90% of their highest historical usage, or their actual capacity, whichever is greater, whichever is greater. This is precipitated by the fact that the water department, for many users, large users, has to be ready, willing, and able to supply water, to the point of sometimes having to purchase water from outside sources, specifically Aqua, to be ready to do so in case these large users say, "Okay, we're ready to use the water now," and then if they don't want to use the water, we still purchase this water from Aqua when our own wells aren't used to their capacity like they should be. This is a way for the water department to recoup some of the lost monies that it should be getting because of this. I don't believe this affects many, in fact, it may only affect one user at this time, and it certainly isn't designed to affect heart, you know, a large number of users, but it is only designed to affect the largest users. And the amount, the cutoff figure was not, certainly not arbitrary, I mean, Mr. Florick and Mr. Parsons spent a lot of time going over this with me and trying to figure out the fairest way to do this, and they felt that this 100 million gallons per year was inadequate number to cut it off in.
Has anybody talked to the one potential customer that would be affected?
I don't, not to my knowledge, I mean, I know that certainly the correct public notice went out and was published in the paper, but I don't know if anybody's actually reached out to them.
Anyone in the audience care to speak on this issue? Anyone else on the council care to speak? Motion to close the public hearing.
Move it.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas members of the council, members of the public, and all intenants have had an opportunity to express their written oral comments regarding said proposed local law, now therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law which would adopt Article III entitled Minimum Annual Charges to Chapter 173 of the Fulton City Code entitled Water is hereby approved.
Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas the meeting of the council in December of 1997, a resolution was passed approving the Sealrite Campus Plan, whereas part of said plan included the discontinuance of a portion of South First Street. Now therefore be it resolved that under the authority contained in general city law, Section 20, Paragraph 7, this council hereby discontinues and abandons that portion of South First Street located between State and Division Streets, and be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any documents necessary to carry out, carry out the intent of this resolution, including but not limited to a quick claim deed to Sealrite for the city's right-of-way.
Is there a motion?
We don't really-
Move it.
Okay, never mind.
It's your call.
Never mind.
Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Next item.
Before we go on, uh-
Next item.
Notation that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Ken Myers to the Fulton Housing Authority to fill the expired term of Teresa Weinhold effective July 16th, 2000, and to expire July 15th, 2005, is entered into the minutes of this council meeting of August 15th, 2000, as a matter of record.
Next item.
To resolve that Chapter 165, subsection 165-58, Schedule 14 of the Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance of the City in Fulton entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times, be amended to read as follows, add 165-58, name of street, Fay Street, on the north side, location between South First Street and Taylor Ave.
Oh, you're going that word.
This was based on the request that you made for the traffic study at the last meeting, Alderman Sherman. Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized aside the unified court system, Chapter 213, Cleaning and Minor Repairs Claim Form for the period of April 1st, 1999 to March 31st, 2000.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Does anyone in the audience have any business to bring before the council?
Joe. Back on July 6th-
Could, I have your name and address, please?
Robert Penich, and I live at 61 Wyburn Road, Fulton. Back on July 6th, I, my wife was at Lee Memorial, she works there, and she had her car in the parking lot, and I called you on this. I don't know if you remember. Yes, I do. And I also brought the car down, showed it to Alderman Lincoln. Well, they were cutting up the road down there, and they just covered my car with debris. I told you at the time, I wanted to get in here sooner and I couldn't. I told you at the time that I would try and wash it and clean it off, well, that didn't work out so good, it got into the soft coating, so, I just brought the car, it was just detailed and everything. Long story short, and on the map that I give the city here, when I brought it in, I showed them the car was approximately from here, the wall, to where they were working. And I got a letter from Streger and Van Sanford that they are not liable, the city is not liable for the damage they've done to my car, instead of an estimate. I admit, the estimate came from the Ford garage, it was a little high, I could have got another, or they could have asked me to get another, and I would have. But I guess what I'm trying to say, if I, if they don't want to pay for it, why are we as a taxpayer paying for insurance if the city is not liable from their negligence? They could have come in the hospital, they have an announcement system in there, they could have asked people to move the cars, they did none of this. But I'm not very happy about it.
What specifically did the insurance letter say, sir?
It's a little cranky, I was a little upset, my crankles got thrown away.
Sorry.
I can understand that.
Can understand that.
The corners are chewed off.
A little nervous.
I guess I'm liable for everything I do, I don't want the city to be liable for negligence.
Well, I guess, I guess the question this letter raises, sir, is who was doing the work?
I did see the car, and the car had the damage, and still is.
I guess all I can tell you, I mean, we pay for insurance, and we have to honor what they say, I mean, if we second-guess our insurance company, we shouldn't have insurance. So if you feel that they're wrong, this doesn't prevent you from filing a small claims action.
I don't want to go through all that.
Well, I understand that, but we don't-
I want to know why this-
This council doesn't have any legal authority to pay for your damages if our insurance company said no.
Okay, I want to know why the city is not liable.
I don't know, that's the insurance company's call. I mean, I, I may or may not disagree with them, but I can't say it either way, because that's why we have insurance. I know that sounds like giving you the runaround, but-
It is.
Well, that's what I have to do, I mean, that's my job, it's, that's-
Can, can we get in touch with the insurance company and find out what their basis is, the damages are not due to actions by the city?
Yeah, we certainly have, have a right to bring that up to them and find out, I'd be glad to do that for you. If you'd like, you could have Mr. Pelosi make a copy of this, and he'll give it to me, and I'll call them tomorrow and see, see why they made that determination. Maybe they were, they had some erroneous information, I don't know, I really don't know. Certainly be glad to do that for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Anyone else have any business to bring before the council?
Mr. Mayor, fellow-
Could I have your name and address, please?
Michael Churello, 465 South First Street, Fulton, New York. The question is, is there going to be a pedestrian walkway down First Street at the Sealrite I think it would be an asset. Now, for an individual to walk down Lion Street, west of South First Street, and around Sealrite, which the Fulton Common Council has planned, would be a ridicule, I think. The individual would be in tranquil because of tractor-trailer traffic coming down the street and going down the street.
There are plans being drawn right now for an excess road to go around the west side of the Sealrite property.
This would break a tradition, I think, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be tranquil for the individual, I don't think. I think an effort should be made to have a pedestrian walkway down, down First Street. Also, is Sealrite going to build across South First Street literally, or is there going to be a skyway ramp that will be going over South First Street?
I don't believe it's going to be a skyway, but I believe it is a ramp to facilitate movement of product between the buildings on either side of the road.
Now, is South First Street going to be blocked off literally, exactly, Mayor?
Right where it is right now, yeah. It is closed, it is going to be closed.
Now, for an individual to have to walk down 481, especially a youngster, a young youngster, this would be, in my opinion, wouldn't be, wouldn't be safe, if a youngster has been used to walking down South First Street.
Well, if the youngster uses a sidewalk, I think that they'll be safe.
In the winter, what about in the wintertime, Mr. Mayor? The sidewalk on 481 or South Second Street is never, is never shuttled. I'm referring to the area between Pratt Street and Division Street.
The railroad and Division.
An individual has to walk in the road, excuse me.
Actually, Mike, you got a good point, because on the Sealrite road, the Sealrite side of 481, there's not a sidewalk there.
Yes.
There is no sidewalk on that side of the street, no, you have to go to the other side of the street.
Because of the train tracks.
There's no room to put a sidewalk in there.
So if you're going to walk down South First Street, you got to go to Division, cross 481, walk on the sidewalk, and then cross back again?
Yes.
That's actually a very dangerous situation there, because in order to really cross safely, you'd have to, you should walk to Fay Street, which is going the exact opposite way for pedestrians-
Well, again, we have, we continue to ask DOT to put a traffic signal in at Second and Division, and every time we talk to them about all the development in the area, we continually ask for that to be put in.
Because we cannot put a sidewalk on the west side of 481 because of the railroad tracks that are located there, the proximity from the curb to the railroad tracks is too close, so we cannot, we've looked into it, we cannot put a sidewalk there. So we're really kind of screwed as far as pedestrians from, from south of Fay Street heading down Division Street.
Now, to walk down 481 by the Sealrite is not very tranquil, walking on, oh, sophisticated stones, I would say, and, and it's not, wandering on gun grass, and there are cars parked in that area, and it's like, it's like a hobo taking a short journey, I think. I would, I would like there to be a pedestrian walkway down, down the south, through South First Street.
If there's a ramp across the street, we cannot put pedestrian walkway down First Street.
Well, that would be elevated, wouldn't it, Mayor?
No, it's only going to be elevated from one side of the road to the other, I don't believe there's going to be enough room to walk under it.
Could you tell me what the approximate height is going to be?
No, I can't, I haven't seen those plans yet.
Now, will this be, could you tell me if this will be the approximate height of the walkway that Nestle has on Fay Street?
No, definitely not. It won't, will not be that high. It is going to come up from the street level on the west side of the street up to the area that they're building, which is, I think, four feet on the east side of the street, to the new building that they're putting in right now.
I think there should be concern for the, for the pedestrian, I think.
I am meeting with the manager of Sealrite, I believe it's Thursday morning, and I will voice your concern to him in regards to this, to see if there's anything that we can do. Does anyone else have any business to bring before the council? Does anyone on the council have any business to bring before the council?
I just want to thank the Ronbeks and the Davenport's for coming here tonight and expressing once again the interest in us moving on a recreational area for them in the meeting, temporarily until we hopefully do something at Van Buren Park.
Thank you.
We'll get it done.
Anyone else? Entertaining a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss contract negotiations?
All, all right.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.